We're on.
And I'm going place. I'm just gonna say that's the way it was when I got it.
There you go.
Um, beans, the hour nine o'clock, we'll call this meeting to order and have roll call.
Yes.
Here?
Bobbit.
Here.
By.
Here. All right. So bow your heads, we'll have a word prayer. Dear Lord in heaven and Father, we thank you for this day, dear Lord, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestowed upon us. We thank you for life, health, and strength, and right use for our minds and bodies. We thank you for watching over our employees, we ask that you continue to watch over them, help them return home to their families safely. We ask that you be with our legislators, help them as they struggle to balance the budget and provide rules and regulations for all of us. We ask that you give them support, guide, guard, and direct them in their, in their decisions. We ask you, dear Lord, to watch over us, protect us, guide, guard, and direct us, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Dean, would you leave this from the flag to leave salute?
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Acknowledge that the agenda was properly posted in accordance to the open meeting act.
Okay. Consider the minutes for the February nineteenth, twenty nineteen, regular meeting.
And thank you for clearing up the bill on the execs. I had, I had ten fifty-nine on, you know, and I had all these pages and I'm at home, I'm like.
And I couldn't remember when we did it.
Yeah.
I was going, I know we did it, but I have no idea when.
Yeah, yeah, well, so thank you for pointing that out, because I was like, oh, so I did go back and watch it, figured it out, so. Do you know if that works, sir?
Yep, looks good to me.
You have a second before you get started?
Before starting.
You are starting.
Here we.
Didn't come see me after you get done.
Okay, will do, yes. Entertain a motion to approve.
I'd move, I'd move to approve the minutes of February nineteenth as presented.
Hold second. It's been moved and it's been seconded, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye?
Bobbit.
Aye.
By.
By. Motion carried. Okay. Comment from the public on the below agenda items?
I haven't.
Seeing none that nobody signed up, we'll go on to item seven A. Resolution twenty nineteen, uh, execution of C I R B advanced construction agreement, state job thirty-one eight four four oh four in the hole for District One. Stephen signed off on that. This is for my S T P project. Out there.
Is it Clyde Road?
Clyde Road, right. From State Highway eleven extending three miles north on Clyde Road. And as long as look at that, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and it's been seconded to proceed with this.
She didn't sign like that.
I know, I just was letting you guys look.
Oh, sorry.
That's all right.
I didn't chew coffee so we could have one and make it.
I'm just mushroom down here.
Thank you. Uh, today is the twenty-fifth. Well, I made a motion, it's been seconded, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye?
Bobbit.
Aye.
By.
Aye.
Motion carried. We are going to have, uh, that'll be on next week's agenda for the repayment.
Oh, right, I've already got it on there.
Okay, very good, very good, but the money has to be transferred, uh, has to be.
Appropriated.
Appropriated.
Oh, wait.
A portioned.
A portioned, thank you. Has to be a portion before we can issue a P O to pay that back, so. Item two, item B, I guess, uh, C I R B advanced construction agreement, state job thirty-one eight forty-four oh four D one. And that is my Clyde Road again.
And then is that the one talking about we're going to do the, uh, put the money up from the revolving fund?
It's gonna be, um.
You're borrowing it from the revolving?
Right, right.
And then that's what that's saying?
They're going to transportation, uh, previously programmed by the county and designated as federal aid project, and it gives the A C T S T P two twenty-seven C. Oh twenty-three in the whole C I, consisting of the actual improvements as follows, reconstruction of that highway. And this is actually for one million, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and seventy-two cents.
Max, how much do you have to put in on that? Is it, is it eighty-twenty, or did you get a full, or was it eighty up to the million?
It's eighty-twenty.
It's eighty-twenty?
Yes. Now, I got more money advanced constructed, uh, I was awarded more money. They have since come back and said that the federal part that they would pay because they dropped it down to sixty-five thirty-five. And I said, boy, I, we can't do that. But anyway, long story short, they awarded me more money on the E T R than what this project is going to cost. But we all know that the escalating prices, we don't know, I may have to come up with some more money.
Yeah.
Later.
But that's a good thing to use that E T R because it'll kind of lock some of those prices in now.
Yes.
So in the long run, it probably will save you actually.
It, it will, there's no doubt about it.
Right.
And that's part of the argument down there is. Is there two of these? I think there is.
Yes, actually, I think there's three, because I didn't know if one needed to go to ODOT, or do they just go to C E D, I didn't know.
No, it goes to ODOT.
Okay, so that's what I thought, I did three.
That's good.
I figured more is better than not.
Yeah, right.
I did make you coffee, because I don't know why I did sign a lot of those.
Okay, um, I would make a motion to, uh, approve the C I R B advanced construction agreement.
Second.
Been moved and it's been seconded, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye?
Bobbit.
Aye.
By.
Aye. Motion carried. ODOT selection of turnkey service provider, grant J P number twenty-eight four sixteen oh four in the hole. Cotton Road over Wild Horse Creek for District Three. This is what was brought up at the C E D meeting the other day.
It's the original, I put a place for all of you to sign on the original.
Very good, thank you. Uh, this, this states that Grant County has selected ODOT's procurement process regarding the pre-approved ser, provided, providers list for the turnkey services. The county has selected Pinnacle.
How did we select Pinnacle?
I, I believe that Donnie visited with, with Dean over to the C E D meeting.
Part of it is, uh, what they've been using and part of it is, you know, um. They put the, they put the options out there to other people, I mean, presented to other people, and that's the one they went with.
Which Donnie is on his way here, he's providing.
Do we want to skip over that until we, until, put this on hold until Donnie gets here? You know, I mean, I don't see a reason to.
I don't know. I, I would just make a note that, uh, this is the first time the county, Grant County, has ever gone out for right away, uh, anybody to do their right away. And I understand since Dean is not the elected official that that's why we're, we're doing that. Because it, it's gonna cost seven thousand, two hundred dollars and, and, um, that's what they're estim, they're estimating it. And it's in the SERB, they've, they've funded it in the SERB, so it's not costing the county, but it's costing the SERB, so.
Right, that's what he said, it was in there, and he had called me and said, do you want to, or what? And I, it made it sound like that's the way it was operating, and then I talked to everybody else and I found out a little difference, so, um. You know, like I said, because I'm not really in the know of everything, I just told him to go ahead and do it.
I would make a, are you ready for that, Max?
Yes, I am.
Okay, I would make a motion to approve the, is it contra, what is this? Is this a?
It's a.
It's a service provider agreement. And did the district attorney sign off on this?
No, I.
It didn't have anywhere for him to sign. It's just that front page was all there was for signature.
Sides.
But then, um.
So he doesn't, it's a right, it's a scope of service and a cost estimate, maybe because it's doing through the SERB.
He signed off on the right away agreement.
Okay, all right, so I would make, my motion would be to, uh, to approve the.
I take that back, I apologize. No, there's no place for him to sign off on it either. Here's the right away agreement.
Okay, so the services agreement is between us, the board, and the consulting, it has to be signed by the district attorney.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
It has to be, if it's, if it's, if it's between, uh, now, if that was in between the C E D, we, like, the C E D, we've got interlocal agreements, so. But since this is between a company and us, the D A is gonna have to sign off on that. So here's the problem. Does that, Don, was Donnie coming to pick all this stuff up to take down to ODOT?
I mean, I'm guessing, I'm not for sure, I don't know, he didn't think.
Okay.
Because I've got several other things for him as well.
See, and this is that.
Yeah, that number C and D. C, D, and E. No, the pro, the, the programming resolutions, are those, what are those? What are those, are those something that the D A needed to sign off on too?
There's no place for him on that either, but they're C E D resolutions, I don't know.
Yeah, that's between us and the.
And the C E D.
Is that right?
Well, this just gives the whole scope of the whole project. But see, this is U S extending four miles, this here is the programming resolution for SERB. Just like you signed up for your.
Yeah, but that, that's just a resolution, so that's not a contract, that's just a resolution, so the D A doesn't sign off on resolutions.
Right.
Okay, but the, but the, uh, the C and the D, those are contracts.
Well, let's see, or is it just the selection process of turnkey service?
Yeah, these three here don't have to be.
No, but the D definitely, it's an agreement, and C is a, and this is to the Department.
Pre-approved services, does that matter? Was this regarding the pre-approved service provider list?
See, the state goes out and they, they, they have a provider list that the state shows, and Pinnacle is on that list.
Right, so.
So all we have to do is make a determination of who we are, and since the C E D is, is, we're part of that, I think we can sign it. But that's, that's just.
I think this, I think the C we can sign, but I don't think we can sign the D.
Okay, yeah, that was a provider.
I don't think, yeah, C I think we can sign.
And the right away acquisition service agreement, we may not be able to.
Because that's an agreement, and any contracts of agreement, because it's governing law invoices, regulatory compliance, the D A needs to sign off on that.
I think the D A needs to sign that one.
So I think we can do everything but D, I don't think we can do D. Okay, we're back on C.
Back on C.
Okay, I would make a motion to approve the ODOT selection of turnkey service provider of Pinnacle for, uh, Grant Job Piece two eight four one six four in the hole. Cotton Road over Wild Horse Creek because, for the right, to, to get right away, because Dean is just not the actual commissioner sitting. He's sitting in for the commissioner, and the commissioners usually do the work, so.
Okay.
That's not standard for Grant County. Is that perfectly clear?
I, I get your jet, or your chest, yeah.
Okay.
Hell, you.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
I'll second though.
Okay, been moved and it's been seconded, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye?
Bobbit.
Aye.
By.
Aye.
And so this is gonna be.
So this one we can sign, yes.
The selection of the turnkey service provider.
Yeah, that, because it's off of the, off of the, uh, the provider list. Yeah, I guess, maybe, maybe by the end of our meeting, he'd have an opportunity to look at it.
Okay, I only see the one here.
Sign, that's all you sign, you want to sign?
Yeah, there's, that, that's it, yeah.
Oh, here it is.
Yeah, and this was just the first copy of that.
Okay, she just. I think this is your copy, Max. I think she made us a copy.
Okay.
She made that one to see.
Did you make this as, just a second?
Those are your copy, yeah, yeah, here's the original here, yeah.
Got it.
Please, is one okay on that, or do I need to have?
You probably have two.
And just tell Rex and it's something we had on the agenda, it didn't have a place for him to sign, but since it is an agreement with the board, just like he needs to.
But he needs to sign it?
Yeah, he needs to.
Do I need to wait up there for him to sign it?
If at all possible, it would be perfect if he could look at it, but if not, just, we'll go with the flow. See how it goes.
Okay.
But yes, we would like to have it back if we could, thank you.
Sign both of these?
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to skip over item D and go to item E. Twenty nineteen, twenty-ten, program resolution J P twenty-eight six seven four oh four in the hole for District Three.
And these next three, are these all on, are these?
They're not the.
No, no, they're different, aren't they, but the oh four in the hole and oh eight in the hole, is that both on the SERB project?
I think so, that's what I, getting me, because.
They're, they're your Wild Horse Creek Bridge. Right?
She started at, at two eighty-one, two eighty-one, west twenty, yep. And that's northwest two eighty-eight and two ninety-six.
Do you have two br, do you have two bridges for dinner, or one bridge? Okay, one, oh, wait, this is right.
Construction twenty twenty-three and construction twenty twenty-five, so they're different.
Okay, this one, oh four is his bridge maybe. See, because up here, oh four was a right away agreement.
Right, oh four, a lot of times.
Is the same, see, this one that we just did here, these, these are all oh four in the hole.
Yeah.
Oh four in the hole, the same number, well, now, that's a different number though, Max. That's two eight four one six.
See, and that is the same there.
Those two, so these are, these are all the.
Yeah, they're all different, they're gonna be different, because see, the, the dates are different. See, engineering twenty twenty and, and construction twenty twenty-three.
This is actually his road project, the, our number three selection, because of three point two million, okay.
Right, that's exactly what it is.
Gotcha, that's what it is.
These are just the programming resolutions.
These are the resolutions to start programming to.
Ten, eleven, and twelve. Yeah, and this is construction, isn't it, engineering, construction twenty twenty-four, engineering.
This is engineering twenty twenty, construction twenty twenty-three, construction twenty twenty-five, that's off this engineering, and that's another engineering, that might be part two, must be phase two. These must be phase one, those are phase two, okay.
Well, construction here in twenty twenty-five and construction here in twenty twenty-four.
Is Jefferson Blacktop?
Yeah, east, yeah, and that one's west.
That's twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, e, east, west, yeah.
From eighty-one, this one here is from, from eighty-one east.
Mm-hmm.
And that one is from eighty-one west to Red Hill Road.
Yeah. And then these are gonna be.
This goes to M and M, yeah, nine sixty, this goes to nine sixty, yeah, and that one goes to M, to Red Hill Road.
Right, this is a bridge.
And that's a bridge.
On this, for this road project.
Got it.
So.
And that's, that's, that up there is a bridge on what?
It's gonna be a bridge on the, on that project.
One of your bridges on that project.
Gives you the structure number right there.
Uh, circle, it's two ninety-five D. Two ninety-five D.
Two fifty-nine D. Both go like.
Yeah, two fifty, bridge two fifty-nine D.
So see, that's two ninety-six, and that's two ninety. And that's two eighty-eight, so it's gonna be west. And then they're gonna build the bridge.
Okay.
And then this is the other road, so.
Okay.
They're gonna build a bridge, or they've already built a bridge?
No, they're gonna build it in twenty twenty-four.
Yeah. And we got two originals.
Okay, so we can.
Is that bridge east or west of eighty-one?
Well, it's gonna be, it says two eighty-eight, so it's gonna be.
West.
West.
Yeah, it's between eighty-one and Red Hill Road somewhere in there, I know you already did one.
Yeah, we did the one there by Red Hill.
Uh-huh.
Extends eighty-one going west, four miles, how much, how far is that through there, is that four or five?
It goes clear to Red Hill Road.
What?
Two eighty-eight is Red Hill Road.
Is eight eighty.
Is eight eighty?
Eight eighty, right, eight eighty. But, see, they, we're one number off of the state, there should be a zero here.
Yeah, yeah, you, like, on this one, you take the two off and it's nine sixty.
Nine twenty, nine twenty, it starts there on, it's, uh, so it'd be nine thirty, be from nine twenty to, uh.
No, nine sixty. Starts, nine sixty is M and M, and that's where they're gonna start.
Nine twenty is right there at Edgewood.
Yeah.
Right there at eighty-one and Jefferson Blacktop.
To, to eight eighty.
Eight eighty is clear over on one thirty-two. No, eighty-one, it's eighty-one.
Eight, eight eighty is Red Hill Road.
It'd be Red Hill Road, excuse me, yeah.
Well, I.
Got too many, too many numbers.
Yep, yep, too many numbers.
Yeah, eight eighty, yeah.
Right, Red Hill Road.
Eight miles here, and you're doing a bridge, going down this bridge here on the curve.
Does it, does it show two fifty-nine?
This is not our bridge map, like, uh, this, uh, Max, this is, this is our district county map, so.
Our county.
This is dip, but it's gonna be somewhere in there, so. That is correct, that's what we did on our plan, I do remember that.
All right.
So, like, do we want to make a motion on all?
Yeah, we can do them all three together.
All three together.
I'd make a motion to approve the resolutions twenty nineteen-ten, twenty nineteen-eleven, twenty nineteen-twelve for the program resolution for the, uh, District Three SERB project programs to be engineered in, beginning in twenty twenty, and moving forward.
I guess.
I'll second that.
Okay. Been moved and it's been seconded, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye?
Bobbit.
Aye.
By.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, item I, blanket purchase orders and travel claims. Review.
Um, do we didn't, we don't, yeah, did you have any H, any Hs?
H, huh, I just crossed that off already.
We do have some transfers.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Transfers of appropriation, sorry about that.
Um, uh, what do we got?
Well. Uh, we got one for Rural Fire Department, LaMonte, wants to transfer.
No, um, it has to go through X side.
This is their invoice for their fire, uh, department. They want to change forty-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars. And transfer it from their.
M and O to capital, they must, yeah, to cover their, one of their bills.
Yeah. M and O to Capital Outlay, that's one. Another one here is. It's gonna be to transfer from their M and O to Capital Outlay, two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifteen cents down to Capital Outlay also.
This third one was caused from.
This third one was caused from, uh, there was mon, one hundred percent movement for Holly Fire on Capital Outlay. It was put into Deer Creek.
Oops.
Capital Outlay, so then a bill was paid out of it. Well, then, once we get it all corrected, there's not enough money in the account, so I'm just getting back to a dollar into that account, and then I'll, and I.
Is that what, they're supposed to have a dollar?
Um, no, zero. Well, Deer Creek, Lamont. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm talking about, uh.
Well, this is Deer Creek Fire Department.
On their Capital Outlay.
You're transferring three thousand five oh eight forty from their M and O to Capital Outlay.
Okay, see here.
Yep.
Here was their hundred percent movement, and then they had an eight thousand dollar bill come in. This money should not have ever gone into that account, so they really only have three thou, this amount, well.
Till they have four thousand four.
They had four thousand four hundred and ninety-two sixty, and they paid an eight thousand dollar bill, so when we made that correction, it made them a negative.
Okay, so, are we gonna discuss that under K? What is item K? Is that?
Yeah, that's item.
Well, it, it's.
Did you get Mike Williams to sign off on that, though? I just asked.
No, I, well, I apologize, Penny, I've got a lot going on. No, I did not getting to sign off, well, yeah, we do. So, no, I did not getting to sign off on it, I just said that, and so we can hold it till the fourth if you like. See, I can have an attitude too.
Just think of the chief, the fire department chief ought to be signing on these things.
Okay, so.
They probably had more money. I did speak with him about it, and I was going to get with him yesterday, and I did, I failed to do that.
Unfortunately, the chiefs don't come up and wanna sign anything, that's why they give their requisitioning in there to other people. They don't, they don't come up and do it, so.
When they call them, they wanna know what they're telling them, we need to be able to tell them what they have in the accounts.
Okay, so I don't know that we oughta be doing this tran.
That's K, that's K, we need to talk about that under K, we need to worry about these two right now, right.
Yeah, and then we'll hold this until right.
Hold that, okay, okay.
Uh. Okay, we had the two transfers for the Lamont.
Fire Department.
Fire Department.
Take, to match up with their, their Capital Outlay moving, with their programs. I would make a motion to, to approve the two transfers for the Lamont Fire Department.
Hi, can Mindy come in for a minute?
Yes, sir. Okay, for the two transfers for Lamont Fire Department, it's been moved and seconded. Have a roll call vote.
Yes.
Aye.
Bobbit.
Aye.
Bye.
Aye.
Motion carried, we'll sign in.
See, we can address that if we get it figured out when we get to K, we can do it, yeah, so.
Yeah, I gotta run and get the other, other works, so, um, and then.
I'd move to review payment of purchase orders and travel claims.
You made a motion.
To review payment of purchase orders and travel claims.
I'll second. Review of vote.
Yes.
Aye.
Bobbit.
Aye.
Bye.
Aye.
Okay.
And so, since you're on POs, I wanted to say, on the Health Department one, I did talk to them about their salary thing, and so I typed up a little sheet, and there's one, three of you there, and I just put it on the top, so there's two top ones, and this, because I know we were questioning how they arrived at their thing.
Right.
So, this tells what counties they serve and what their title is, and they said when they go to that county, they input into their system, and then that's. So here's one of these for each of y'all.
I'm still not gonna approve that, so I want documentation of the charge and the other county.
Oh, okay.
I would, I would like to know, since August, I wanna know what each county has been paying.
Okay, okay. I'll be right back.
Okay. This is from Josh Reed, from case, except they have in their case, great answer, don't they, or should we ask them to come up in Lamont?
Yeah, and we're done, we're about thirty, we're about thirty hours from losing our second cat.
And I'm not gonna be able to come, so they're all well brought, we're not coming in.
I mean, I walked up and I saw that and like, and then he cleaned out the tires and I thought, yeah. Cause he would have to take them off, actually, they were going to be a major trouble to change out if you got one, and, and.
I don't know anything about these either, I've not seen them, I don't know anything about them.
That's how we learn.
Yeah, that's right, that is exactly right.
I, I mean, uh, uh, I just feel like the cat and John Deere, like, we got it, so, you know, we don't have to.
Yeah, exactly, case grader, they have a new case grader on site, probably can have a farm up there, bring it out to Lamont, like they did the.
Yeah.
Lamont, so, okay.
Tell them to make sure it's a six-wheel drive.
Don't bother if it isn't.
Yeah.
Mindy, how's your eyes doing?
My eye is doing wonderful.
Good.
I had cataract surgery in this eye.
Oh.
And, uh, my former glasses, however, did not survive the surgery.
Oh, dear.
But, uh, I don't need them, so.
Well, that's good.
But they're supposed to do the other eye in March.
Who did it?
Doctor Lawrence.
Oh, yeah.
He's out at Eden Eye Clinic.
Is that all this?
No, no, these all go in there, I'm sorry, I'm just taking too long.
Now, it's helping, the only trouble I had was the nausea from anesthesia, and that kicked my butt.
See, that bothers a lot of people.
Mm, I don't do well with it either.
When you go in, tell them, they'll put you on a different anesthesia, and you won't have near the problem.
Let's think, I, I tell them that every time, and I still have trouble.
Well.
That's the last of those.
When I had mine the first time, they, uh, they said, oh yeah, you were in this room, and you went here, and went here, and I thought I liked it.
Uh, she said she gave me something to settle my stomach down, and I'm like, okay, cool, and we were getting out of the car to my butt.
And the time, I remember going into surgery, and I remember being pushed out the door, and that was the only, and everything else was, and I was still very, and I told them, I said, I got, I actually got sick in the ride. And they said, well, we'll change it soon, anyway.
Starting a new folder.
I don't know whether this is, it says two fourteen, but it's got date in, two thirteen, date close to fourteen, so which one do you go by?
Eleven, two thirteen.
Well, that's what they've already stamped it, so.
This is, and we got more.
No, these, these are coming.
You didn't want spending money with us.
No, we keep spending.
Keep doing, keep spending, don't you?
We do, and it's been wet, we're still spending money.
That's.
You use them to break down for some reason.
Yeah. Free oil can cost you if it's got water in it. That's the last of that one, for those burners. What are you, what are you paying off, Max?
I took the trailers.
Oh, wow, that's always a good feeling, isn't it?
Yeah, I know, it's a good deal.
That's the only one in that one.
P O signs for the O S H station.
On.
P O's signed.
That's a single, does not go in a folder.
We have a P O that's not signed. If someone. Oh, okay, okay, thank you, bye-bye. Down here anyways, so.
Okay.
Didn't solve it for me, so, that's, that's a better day.
Yeah, see that, we're gonna have to buy a roll of that, the roll tape.
Yeah.
Make it a new folder.
Cindy, it's okay if we pay the surcharges on credit cards?
Yeah, I think so, you know, I know we have.
Can we, can we just have a couple of these?
Any jewelry, please, thank you, bye.
This is in that folder.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, nothing, I was just, uh.
That's all I need, I'm just like making you get your exercise.
Okay, this is a question that you had about the, and we haven't got it answered yet, and I still, I'd signed them from before, so.
I'm not, still, we get that.
And Darlene did say, we need more information to let her know, so I'll get it all over today and say.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like a breakdown of all five counties, what they've, whatever county has had to pay, you know.
Yeah.
I just wanna know how it's divided up, yeah, we do, it's open records, it's no big deal.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, all of these will go in that folder. They're not expensive.
Lots of stuff there is.
Yeah, paramedic classes, five thousand six hundred and seventy-one dollars.
Yeah.
For one class, I imagine it's like a, a six-week class or something, but man.
It seems like it's a little outrunning, it's hot landish.
Exactly. That's the last of those folders. You can call the hotel direct and just ask them for direct billing, I mean, uh, there's most of them out there.
Do it now, because otherwise they do a lot of business.
They do it now, yeah, you don't, you ask for direct billing, and there's, and ask, tell them it's government right, they have to give you government, you have to ask them first, do you have, they might say they don't have any government room. Do you have, they might say they don't have any government room rates available, rooms available. But there's a bunch of them out there. So there, yeah, most of them are pretty good. But I, there's several down there by where, where Sheplers used to be. I know there's two of them right there that I've stayed at. There's the Marriott and Holiday Inn. I've stayed at both of them, and they do direct billing without a problem. So... That's the last one from that folder. The Skirvin downtown even does direct billing at government rate.
Really? Well, I haven't come across many that don't do government rate. Now, some of them, if it's on some of that's... I've run into it more in St. Water than anywhere. If it's on some of that's, there's a lot of stuff going on, they'll say they're out of government.
Yeah, yeah. I run into that a lot, especially with conferences.
And I just say, okay, I have to have the government rate. And if you don't have anything. And sometimes they'll say, well, let me see what I have to do. And then back on, and they'll give me the government rate. And sometimes it won't.
Yeah. That is the last one. It's the last, last one.
Hey, there you go. Okay, um, purchase orders and travel claims approval.
I would make a motion to approve the payment of purchase orders and travel claims.
That's okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Hall in favor?
Uh, Hess.
Aye.
Bobbitt.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
Call Alex and tell him those are ready.
Item J, blanket purchase orders. Okay.
Hello, P.O.'s are ready. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Blanket purchase orders.
Uh, we don't have any blanket purchase orders.
Okay, none. Okay, item K. Acknowledge the correcting of transfer of funds from rural fire department, Deer Creek Fire Department to Holly Fire Department. Capital outlay, correction of 100% money movement to F.Y. 1819. Okay, this is, this is where we were in before when we didn't finish the...
Which this transfer could go through regardless of the correction because it's still gonna have to go, I mean...
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, but we can talk about it.
From Deer Creek Fire Department.
Explain to us what we've got here, Cindy.
Sure.
From, uh, their M and O to capital outlay. They need to move $3,508.40.
There's, I put the fiscal year 17, 18 figures. And then, and to show where it should have been and how it didn't move correctly.
Okay. Yeah, this is 17 to 19.
Well, that's Deer Creek. Okay, Deer Creek.
Right, capital outlay, 100% from 17 to 18, 630. That shouldn't show up as negative 406.
Well, walk us through that.
No, that's okay. And it's because our system allows us to back.
Yeah.
Back it. Okay. So this is on 17, or 7/1 of 17, they, there, it was $3,491.21. Okay, so that was the money movement. And that shows it brought it to zero. And that's on Deer Creek Capital Outlay. Okay, if you go to Deer Creek Capital Outlay... Let me see. Okay, here it shows it got put in, but it also got the 406, 246.
So that's what you're, okay.
Right, so then here, because, and because I've backdated it...
Okay, backs it out now.
Backs it out. And then that, and then they've had a P., or a warrant paid to men at manufacturing for $8,000. So they were short in capital outlay.
Yeah.
And so I...
Well, should we, I'm, I'm just gonna ask you, Cindy. Should we move 8,000 just so we can track it? That we know that we're moving 8,000 from M and O back over to capital outlay? And that, that, that giving that regular balance?
Can I say something?
Something?
I think we ought to go back to the beginning of the fiscal year and get what the split was and should have been for that division.
That's what it is. That's what I'm showing right here.
I've got what you had. And you didn't go back to the beginning of the fiscal year and get what it was.
Now, when you're talking about fiscal year, we're talking about 17, 18, or 18...
This year, at the beginning of this year. I think you guys have had that issue before on your highway where the splits for the sub-accounts did not get the correct amounts moved. So then you had a, you had a wrong amount in your division to add up to the whole highway thing. Same thing is happening here because we've got eight rural fire departments and one massive rural fire. On my, on my side, it is one massive fire fund. But before any money got moved last year, it should have been added up to see what those individuals were that were going into the lump sum before. And then we, we caught it. We would've caught it.
Well, I agree, but so here is the breakdown. I don't understand the problem.
I understand what you're saying on the breakdown. However, I think when we go in and out and in and out with so many figures on that appropriation ledger that we ought to go back to the giggo of when it was a fund by itself.
But if we're in, we have balanced since then with the treasure?
The only way you have balanced is because I do not have the individual fireworks.
I get that, Penny. I get that. But what I'm saying is, so we balanced, but they were in the... I understand that, Penny. But what I'm saying is, the total, the bottom line was correct. But the split out was wrong. I'm showing you where the split out was wrong.
Yeah, it's your call. I'm just saying that in order to be more careful, that maybe that's what we ought to do, is go back to the original and take each fire department and make sure they're getting their correct amount.
Well, is there, this shows what they had at the end of the year. Would that, I mean, that, that shows what they had at the end of the year. Right there, 3,000. They showed they had 3,491.26 at the end of the...
Is that the cash statement that you've got there from Buddy? Because that's the only thing that's gonna show you the correct amount.
Well, I don't have that, but we, we can look up and, uh...
Yeah.
And the auditors deal and, uh, I mean, not auditors, but the audit and show.
The budget.
The cash statements too.
Budget.
Yes, you do. That was my suggestion.
I don't have it, I don't, I don't understand everything you're saying, Penny. When you explain things to me, I don't understand when you say things to me because you don't explain it to my turn.
You don't listen very well.
Well...
And it's your way or no way. And you don't wanna hear what anybody else says.
Oh, and that's right. He never done that issue, ain't this correct? You're the turn storm.
Okay, this is...
That, right. Boy, you got a nice face today.
This is where I was wondering. We, we've got Holly involved. But we don't have her Hollywood. Okay, guys, let's, let's keep it secret.
Here we go. Okay.
My question is, is we, we, we've got Holly mentioned in here. Did we get money put over into Holly? Or is that just the department that it's filtered down through that we picked was...
Holly was, was short.
Was short.
Yeah, because their money went to Deer Creek.
Yeah, Deer Creek.
Okay, so we, we need to have a paper trail that show...
Okay, here's, okay. Here's the Deer Creek Fire Department total, according to Buddy. On June 30th, 2017, would've been 826,966.06.
Okay.
So, so Cindy, could, could you just run those three? What are, I don't know what other...
Let me go run those three.
Okay. Why don't we take a short recess here? And make a motion to take a short recess.
A second. Okay, we need, it's been moved and segmented to recess at 10 o'clock. Uh, roll call.
Hess.
Aye.
Bobbitt.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are in recess. Yes. Okay.
You never showed it to me.
I did show it to Cindy.
Let's see, and I think she said the DA signed off on that item D so we can go up there and pick that up sometime too.
Okay. I can't imagine Donnie being this late.
Did he have to stop in Alphaford County?
Well, I don't know.
Maybe he got stopped by the highway patrol. Maybe he did.
He drives.
Does he?
You'll find out.
I find myself driving slower and slower all the time.
Find yourself what?
Driving slower and slower as I get older.
Just know you're gonna have to go to work when you get there. Why hurry up to get there?
One day, it was when I was down, gone from Echo down to the Capitol and, you know, just driving on the two, two, you know, how, two or three lanes going down to the Capitol, someone was on the side street coming over to get it in and I, I happened, you know, just paying attention, but I just stayed in my lane. They came in and whipped around me and stepped out in front of me and slammed on their brakes. Road rage.
You were doing what, five hundred?
Yeah, or something. It was just like, okay, sorry.
They had to hurry up to get to it.
Yeah.
Okay. We entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
Uh, not executive. I'd make a motion to come back into session.
Out of recess.
Out of recess, yeah.
At ten twenty-two, Cindy made the motion to come out.
I'll second that.
Dean, why it's second that? All in favor?
Hess.
Aye.
Bobbit.
Aye.
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 Okay, we are back in regular session. We talked after, after that deal, uh, I guess Cindy has, Pratt has talked to, uh,
Mike Williams.
Mike Williams and Jeff Bowman, so both departments are aware of that. There, there is a mistake that needs to be corrected there on that, and we thought, it, it looks to me like it'd be a good idea if we'd go back and verify these amounts at that time. I think it would be good to go back and, and like Penny's total amount, the total amount that showed here, and make sure that our transfers of funds are all, but it looks like it's just gonna be a, a pretty simple thing, that it's just the money from Holly got put over into and it's just a typo error deal. But, we would know for sure and have documentation, and Cindy Pratt doesn't have no problem getting to sign off, but she said both of them have been talked to. That's what I was concerned about was is letting each department know either, you don't have this much money and hey, you've got a lot more money than this.
Okay, since they're all under one big front fund, is this just a transfer of appropriations then? Is it, I mean, so that's all it would be?
It's a correcting transfer.
Yes, correcting, yeah.
It's just a, it's just a sub account correction.
But it can be done today, it doesn't have to wait for the excise board or does, before you make it? Because it's all under one fund.
Yeah.
I mean, they're all, it's like if we go from T five to T three, I mean, we're all under one account.
The same fund.
So, yeah.
Well, yes, correct. It's all under the same fund.
Okay, alright. So with that, that takes care of it, right?
Yeah, that takes care of it.
So, so Cindy, this is what we're gonna do here on the three thousand five oh, or did you want to do the eight?
Well, I'd rather do the eight, I think, don't you?
Okay, yeah.
That would be better.
Yeah, so we just need to pick, print up a new one that says eight and sign it as well?
Yeah.
Okay. Are we ready to do that then?
I, I think so.
Okay. I would make a, a motion to, uh, do we sign this one?
No.
Yeah, we do.
Well, yeah, we do sign it, we haven't signed it.
Okay, I'd make a motion to, uh, make the correction for the transfer of funds from the rural fire department, Deer Creek Fire Department to Holly Fire Department. Capital Outlay is a correction of the hundred percent money movement for FY eighteen nineteen, and also to do the transfer of appropriations, uh, from their M and O to Capital Outlay for Deer Creek Fire Department of eight thousand.
That.
Do you have signatures on this?
Yes, we do.
Mike?
She's talked to, we've got it documented.
I'm doing one.
Uh-huh, got it documented.
No signatures.
But we will have signatures.
I'll get him.
He, he's gonna sign it, he's aware of it, and Jeff is aware of it also, and I will visit with Jeff tonight myself personally.
He came in and we visited, and then yes, if you'll visit with him, and once I get it, I'll give you a copy of it.
Well, that was my concern that both parties was aware, and we'll get the documentation. So, Cindy, you moved, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Dean, second that. All in favor?
Hess.
Aye.
Bobbit.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
Is that as time?
Yeah.
That'll work.
Okay. Did you get caught by the highway patrolman?
Hmm.
Okay.
Thank goodness.
I'm just curious.
I didn't speed much.
Yeah.
You drove the speed limit all the way, didn't you?
Far away.
Uh, you said Stephen got that backed down.
At least the speed limit.
At least, yeah.
And it's the four oh six, not the three fifty-eight, right?
The four oh six, yeah, four hundred and six, uh-huh, okay.
Okay, um, let's jump back up to item D, uh, land and right-of-way acquisition service agreement for the Grant County JP twenty-eight, four sixteen, oh four in the hole, cotton road over Wild Horse Creek for District Three. We have the, uh, acquisition service agreement here, and Stephen has signed off on it, and the right-of-way acquisition service agreement here, he has signed off on it also, for both of them.
Okay, you should have.
Yeah, I have all those.
Well, we just had to wait for the DA to sign off, we've already signed the other ones.
No, that's.
Oh, yeah, I have that, and I have that, those are already, they've already approved all of those, we just had to have the DA sign off on this one, yeah.
So I've got them all over here on here.
I would make a motion to sign the land and right-of-way acquisition service, uh, let's see, no, the O dot, which one are we? The land and right-of-way acquisition agreement, Grant County job piece two eight four, one six oh four in the hole.
I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Hess.
Aye.
Bobbit.
Aye.
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 Okay, we took care of the programming resolutions, the next three.
Okay.
Uh, all ready.
Can we get the SERV contract also?
You'll need to test all of those before he takes those.
Are you taking them down today, Donnie?
No, she can just email them back. All I want to do today is the bridge inspection.
Bridge inspection deals, okay, and that's not for down here. Where is the bridge inspection?
I wasn't ever told about bridge inspections.
Okay. Well, I'll leave him with you when we do it next week.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's why you were here, wasn't it?
Calling that way.
Sorry about that.
Oh, that's no problem.
Oh, he's still in our county inspecting more.
We'll, we'll be back.
What do you have done so far, Donnie?
Uh, twenty-five I've done so far. I gave Max his book the other day, and Cindy, you had eight, and Dean, you had, I think it was four, four in your district, and you had.
He was a big winner.
I know, what about that?
I wanted to repair riprap and, uh, bridging markers.
Okay.
So, and it's got the bridge number there.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I think Cindy had enclosures this time, so you lucked out.
Yes, yes.
So, we'll be.
March, March.
March fourth.
Quite a deal, isn't it? Okay, we'll go down to, uh, item L, uh, new account for the fair improvement travel sales tax per request of Grant County Fair Board.
So they have, they're requesting a sub account, uh, I did go to the Fair Board meeting, and when they get those approved, I'll attach a copy of that to this. Um, it's in the fair improvement sales tax. We do not have a travel account set up, and, uh, before we set it up, we will run it through the excise board as well.
Just like we're doing on the metro, whatever.
Okay, are we gonna put some money in it?
We just have to set.
Well, we'll get it set up, and then once the excise board.
Yeah.
Then we'll put some money. Well, we'll get it set up and then once the excise board, then we'll put some money in it.
Okay.
I would make a motion to, uh, set up the new fair, uh, improvement travel for the sales tax per the request of the Grant County Fair Board, subject to the approval of the excise board.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Hess.
Aye.
Bobbit.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, travel account. Donnie, I'm sorry, we didn't get that.
Oh, no, we did, we signed it this week. I'll drop.
Are the same, and then all, if you wanna, do you want, you said just email that other stuff?
No, I just sent on to the police and she, she's gonna have to print a copy in forward of it also.
Okay.
That's about as easy as anything. Otherwise, you gotta have, run a copy.
Yeah.
Alright, you're gonna have a good day.
Okay, thank you.
You two are paid to hurry up and then for nothing.
Oh, that's fine. I gotta go to Perry also.
Oh, okay, alright. Well, then I don't feel so bad.
Be there about, then about thirty minutes.
Thank you, Donnie, appreciate it.
Thirty minutes, okay, you better go. Bye.
Item M, twenty nineteen dash oh seven, declaration of surplus for a Brother Laser printer. Two oh one point oh six for the assessor's office.
I would move to, uh, uh, declare surplus twenty nineteen oh seven for the Brother, Brother Laser printer for the assessor's office.
Okay, all right, question. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Hess.
Aye.
Bobbit.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, item N, twenty nineteen dash oh eight. Uh, resolution, well, to surplus the Brother Laser printer. Two oh one oh six for the assessor's office. Uh.
Wait a minute.
I missed that.
That's double. It should be.
That should be a disposal, not surplus. So I'll just run it back.
Why don't we run it through next week?
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
I didn't see that either.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Till you read it.
I know, till I read it. Uh, item O, twenty nineteen Boundary Annexation Survey, US Department of Commerce, US Census Bureau. This is basically the thing that asks us if we've changed our boundaries.
Not yet.
Nope, not yet.
When the census comes out, we might.
Yeah.
Twenty twenty, it'll be here before you realize it.
Yeah. Okay, uh, Desi put down that, uh, well, she's, that's not right. Twelve and the fourteenth to nineteen.
No, it should've been oh two.
Okay.
I think they're just getting their paperwork in order to start the census paperwork, so.
Yeah. Okay, I think, uh, run that through, we'll go ahead and approve this and send it back in. Our government does not have boundary changes to report.
At this time. I'd make a motion to send the Boundary Annex survey back to say there's no change at this time.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Hi, uh, Hess.
Aye.
Bobbit.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, item P. Revised notice to bidder for oh two twenty nineteen, uh, the Waukeeta Fire Department building project per ADA Young.
Okay, what the deal is, is that Jody, I had emailed him and then he was out doing something and he didn't email me back. Well, he had already put it in the newspaper, so I talked to Stephen and he said just run the revised one back through the board. Um, and, and the only difference is the dates up here.
Okay, the date was wrong.
The dates, right. Well, because it, our board meeting was on Tuesday, so I didn't know he was gonna, he'd already taken it to the newspaper.
You can't do that, no, until it's approved.
Yeah. So, I mean, it didn't publish until after it was approved, because it was approved on Tuesday and then it published on Wednesday.
So you're gonna go back to the earlier dates with that, what has published?
Mm-hmm.
Twentieth and twenty-seventh.
And Stephen said that's legal?
That's how he told me, that's what he told, I mean, we can buzz him if you wanna talk to him.
No, no, if he said it's legal.
That's what he said. Or when I said, he goes, just put it on there and have him acknowledge the revision.
I'd make a motion to acknowledge the revision at the request of ADA Young on the bid oh two twenty nineteen, Waukeeta Fire Department, date changes.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Hess.
Aye.
Bobbit.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carried.
Hi, you're up. Thank you.
Had to be the nineteenth, so it would've been before the twentieth.
I say, here's the, they're the.
Yeah. Are you gonna attach that to the, make sure?
Right, something up and put that with it.
Okay, item Q, uh, annual L E P C awards.
Time is on its way.
We voted in the minutes last time to approve the, uh,
You go.
The Harvey Phelps Volunteer of the Work and Sidney Ray Courageous Spirit Award, right? Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, Brandon, we're back. We, you know, we approved last time the Harvey Phelps Volunteer of the Year Award and the Sidney Ray Courageous Spirit Award. And, uh, we requested some additional information on the other letters of accommodations applicant.
Yes, so we had the, the two letter commendation applicants were Helen, Helen Lascano and Melissa Thedford, both with the Health Department. And I got ahold of them and they said, hold on, I'm trying to find it here, which one was on? That they'd both been there for, one had been there for four years and one had been there for five years. Five years and four years, yeah. Melissa's been here for five, Helen for four. So that is the update I have on those two.
You know, um, well, given a letter of commendations applicants, you know what? I don't know how you all feel about it and stuff, but it might be just as well if we not did that and maybe had a Employee of the Month award possibly for the courthouse or something, you know?
Or county employee.
Or county employee. Uh, I don't wanna get too bland with our recommendations, you know? We originally started this when we had the shooting down at Pond Creek. And that was to signify and represent above and beyond the call of duty and honor that person. And then we also had, uh, we've had a, uh, couple of deals happen where somebody's done something that's been above and beyond. I think that's what we need to focus on myself, you know?
Yes, totally on your guys' recommendations. So it's whatever y'all wanna do.
What do you all think?
I kinda like that. Um, yeah, maybe, uh, Employee of the Month. You know, we, uh, obviously I think Helen and Melissa probably do a really great job over there, but I think here within our courthouse, I think we have a lot of employees that also do a really good job and in our shops and our districts. I think they, you know, something like that might be a good deal, have an employee of the month or of a quarter or something and have a deal where everybody votes, puts their suggestions in. I kinda like that, Max.
Well, um, you know, we wanna honor people and I, I think that the two that we've already put forth are honoring them, you know? I mean, how would you, I, I gotta admire somebody that faces adversity like Sidney does. You know, I mean, it, it helps. And when you talk to firefighters or people that are pro-sports people that goes around and visits these hospitals and stuff, there's a lot of people that bring special meaning to fight and battle and true grit. To me, that, that makes more sense to me, something like that. If that's, okay?
Yeah, let's put that maybe on our agenda to discuss maybe a possible Employee of the Month type deal.
Okay, we'll leave something for that.
But we appreciate you bringing forth the other two and.
And then I had one other, this one have, was not in. Last week, we talked about that. For Carolyn Buchanan, the Citizen of the Year. And there's this, I need to add what's that.
Okay. That's your copy that you need to type out. This'll be for Citizen of the Year.
Yes.
I think she'd be a good nomination.
I do too. I'd make a motion to, um, um, nominate or support, what is it?
Accept.
To accept, to accept the recommendation to have Carolyn Buchanan as Grant County Citizen of the Year.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Hess.
Aye.
Bobbit.
Aye.
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 Motion carried.
I'll get these done up.
You need to.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
That'll, that'll work.
No, I don't think so. We'll do something in April, probably, some certificates, is what we usually do then.
Okay, uh, item R, courthouse, uh, renovation, relocation and renovation. I, uh, I know that there's been a lot of concerns and we've, we're trying hard to go through uh, and, and bring forth, uh, the best solutions for everybody, the least painful. I know it's gonna be painful for everybody to be moving, to have to find different places and to relocate and stuff. And we appreciate everybody, appreciate everybody's concerns and bringing that forth. And we also appreciate the general public's, uh, consideration of our situation when we go to move and stuff. Uh, that being said, if we have, uh, things that need, Cindy, I'll let you go and start and bring us up to date on what you've.
Okay, well, um, I think what they asked, Ambler Architect and, um, Kyler Construction last week had recommended that we totally move out and what they need is a, a date. Because they need to go out for bids. And I think after we've kind of talked around and stuff, trying to get it moved around to fit the dockets and all of that and, and Dean has been up a couple of times and the judge has been up and Rexanne's been up to my shop and, um, we think that we can work something out there. Um, still, we've still got some health issues and stuff. And Penny, are you still interested in going to the motel and, to stay there?
I was, I guess this was rumor, but I was told that the assessor in my office would be in one trailer and that her and, and, and Desi would be in another. Is that just a rumor?
We're, we're still wor, that's what, I'm trying to find out what everybody's wanting, yeah. See, we were.
Yes, that's what you understood.
That's a rumor.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Well, I mean, yeah, that's fine. Uh, can we set these mobile homes close to the courthouse here? That's the only thing that I am concerned about with being able to, if we do need to come back and then people trying to find us. I know when FSA had their trailers wherever it was down there, they, um, people would come to the courthouse all the time and ask, where's, where's the Farm Service Agency?
Yeah.
You have to tell them. So as close as we can get to the courthouse would be my concern.
Well, two blocks.
Too long.
I don't know how we're gonna get much closer than that.
Two blocks, we're, we're trying to work with eighty-one feet.
Oh, eighty-one feet.
Yeah, it's.
Work, work on the fence.
Yeah, it's, yeah, that's a, it'd be a good, secure place, right? So that's kinda what we're working on, but, uh, um, no, if you, you know, we're, we're trying to, we realize it's a tough move and we understood you wanted to move to the motel and, you know, so.
No, no, I wasn't saying that I wanted to move to the motel alone. I was saying that we could put all of us under the same roof. That's what my point was. But if there's room for me in a trailer with the assessor's office, that's fine. As long as it's room for all of us. I, is it just gonna be the first floor that has the trailers or? I mean, it's hard to make a decision when I don't know that.
Well, we, that, 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 where everybody is moving, we haven't, we, we, the first step is we're all moving out. And so we kinda need to get the date down. And I think we've kind of agreed, uh, the, with our, the, the recommended one that I think would work with the dockets is the final move out for us would be June tenth.
Tenth.
And they, or, excuse me, June seventh, yeah, June seventh. And they would start their demolition on June tenth and, you know, go forward from there.
And Penny, you'd come to me and ask me about whether we could, and I went up and talked to Stephen about possibility and he'd come down and said I needed to talk to him afterwards, so I don't know what you guys.
I've got the, um, you asked me to find the statute, so I did get it, but it says shall be held on the second Monday of June, which is June tenth.
Okay, so.
I've already called the auditor's off, now I realize that you guys were wanting us out of here on June tenth. I called the auditor's office to find out if I could even delay the people that are on the resale list for one year until we got back in the courthouse and could do it uniformly. And they said absolutely not, statute.
Okay, so it has to be the second Monday.
But it doesn't say, does it say where, I mean?
Well, I need to be able to tell the people where. I need to be able to advertise it correctly.
So, so even if you had it, say, in the lobby of the, the Sheriff's Department, you know, that, that would be, you know, close.
We can, I just have to be able to advertise it.
Right.
And that's advertised for four weeks.
Four weeks.
I think we'll, oh, we'll definitely know something before then. Yeah, because, well, also, you've gotta realize, yeah. Four weeks and two hours. But you've also gotta realize when we start moving out, probably gonna have to bid some movers, but you can't have every office move out simultaneously because there's only two doors and one elevator. So we're gonna have to take turns on that, you know, each office, not every office, the court is the last day, will be the seventh, June seventh. Now, we might have, everybody else might have different deadlines, you know, we're probably gonna take two or three weeks and everybody's gonna have a different week to be out. So, you know, we're not, and, and we can either put names in hats or we can try to get together and figure out who, who can move. I mean, I, Brandon, I, I think our office, that office could probably move pretty much any time. I don't think we're too time sensitive on some of that, so. But, uh, the, but yeah, we're, we're looking at that. The, the court has, Dana and the judge believe that my office will accommodate the court. Um, the issue of whether we can accommodate the District Attorney's Office, we've got a room back there, but because of the sensitivity of some issues there, um, soundproofing and health-wise because of the, the smell of our fumes, um, with some people, uh, some people are definitely more sensitive to fumes. I get used to it. I don't, I don't smell like, yeah, I, I just, I'm high on diesel, so.
Dab a little on every morning.
But, you know, there's an option there that if, if we moved into trailers, obviously those trailers have four big rooms and bathrooms in the middle. So we might be able to take one big room and designate that directly just for the District Attorney's Office. And then, you know, obviously, we can, you know, uh, I think of the. I think the, in my mind, might have to, you know, scoop some other people together, so we'll just have to figure out, you know, who all can be worked together and see what we got, but I think we can accommodate the district attorney and everybody on this floor pretty easy in there. I originally was thinking you wanted to go to the motel and we thought that, you know, that would give you a room by yourself, then everybody would have a separate room, so, you know.
That's what I was thinking, was everybody would have a separate room.
So in.
So there'd be privacy for every office.
So, and I, and you was concerned about you, your tax collection, even though that's open records, who owes them? You didn't want the conversations to be heard.
Well, the conversations on those who don't pay their tax collection.
Right, yeah. I mean, it's common, I mean, you can go online and find out who hadn't paid their tax.
It's in public records, but it's something that we want to be talking about in front of everybody.
Right, that's what I, that's what I get, I get it.
I don't want to embarrass anybody.
I get that. That's what I said. That's why I said, you may need a separate, that, I said, that's why you may need a separate room, and maybe the motel would be the room for you. I, I don't know.
I don't either.
So that is an option, so.
I don't want to cost the taxpayers any more money than it's already going to cost them, because it's expensive to move.
Sure it is.
Period. But, um, I mean, you know, just keeping the lines of communication open is good. I just didn't, and I appreciate that from everybody.
So, anyway, what we need to decide here, Max, is to, we need to give directions to the, um, the architect on the, the day, so they can put that in their bid packet.
Well, yeah, I think so, you know, and that moving out in stages is a good thing, not, not that we would want everybody to try to move in one day, because it's going to be a nightmare anyway. Everybody'd be getting in front, so we thought we would split that up and, and go, that being.
And about the June thing, I can do it if, if it's okay with the sheriff. We could probably work that out, but, um, I still have to be able to print their deeds, and, you know, if they, if it's bought. If not, I'll have to print the deeds for the county, so, you know, I, I gotta be up and running wherever I get my attention.
So, so what you're saying is wherever you have moved, you've got to have moved and be set in place before that date.
Yes, yes, so I can print deeds and have, make sure my system's working.
Right.
And, you know.
So, so, but if we, just an example, if we moved your office, if we waited and put Deena's office that last week of June, and we put your office the week before, say you, you would be moved out, um, by May thirty-first, then you would know whether your printers and all of that stuff would be up and running. You'd have a week to be online. That might be good for you.
It would be better for me to have that extra time.
So, so May thirty-first might be the, a good date for your office, and then we can stack everybody up behind you.
What's better for my office would probably be in the middle of that month.
Okay.
And, and the reason is.
Yeah, that's fine.
The appropriation.
Okay, yeah, okay, that'd be great. Okay, that'd be really, really great, okay.
To make sure that internet and all that stuff.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Yes.
And that's, Tim, Tim has been up to the office and, and, uh, phone lines, like, I'm already on, our shop is already on the same phone system, and he said my bank might not be big enough for the phone lines, but as far as that, all he's got to do is plug them in to my shop. He said the bigger issue is, he didn't want the idea of us being in too many locations for, that's just too much for him to do, and if, if, let's just, if we were, if you were to move over to the motel, you may not be on this phone system. You might just have your own line, and if you have to call someone else, you have to still dial the three nine five, the, instead of, you know, this, this system.
I'm not saying that I want to be in the motel by myself. The reason that I brought the motel up was so that we could all be under the same roof, close to the, close proximity to the courthouse, and not have to pay electricity. That's, that was my point about the motel.
Yeah, so, just an option, um, so, uh, but if we could get us, you know, if we can figure out something on those two trailers, I'm still working with eighty-one feet. He, since he owns a lot, it's his responsibility to see about electricity and the water and sewer, and last week, uh, Dia was on vacation, so he couldn't get with her to figure that out. Um, Brady Sidwell.
Brady, yeah.
Brady Sidwell owns that, so, and he's going to work with us, uh, maybe put a, whatever we want to do, put a fence across there to make it more private, so we can secure it, you know, and his would be secure. You know, a fence around it, we don't even have that here, so, you know, security would be good, so. Um, we're making progress, but I think we, I think the main thing we need to decide here today is the date, and then everybody can start telling us, you know, what, what, like, you know, your idea, like, you know, I could move out the middle of May, that'd be a good time. If we could find out from everybody else, you know, once we get the trailers moved and figure that out, once we get the trailers over here, anybody's welcome to go look. Have we heard for sure on those?
I just made myself an, well, they told us we got the bid, but then they had to run it through their board meeting on the fourteenth.
Now it's fourteen.
So, so I'll call and get a copy.
So, we're going to try to start, once we've got that, we're going to be in the process of, once he can figure out if we can move there. If he can't move there, we've got to figure something out, so it's, uh, we get the, do we get the cart out or do we get the horse out?
I don't know.
I don't know, so.
And we was going to leave the court there till the tenth, or till the seventh?
Seven, till the seventh.
When is the Monday before June tenth?
Uh, the third, June third.
I'm going to see if I can get Judge Woodward to move his docket to June third.
Okay.
And then we would be able to.
Move out the next day.
We could start on June tenth, but we wouldn't start with the docket.
Gotcha, gotcha.
I'm going to ask him if he'll push that up a week.
Okay, that'd be awesome.
Okay.
And if not, guess what, it might be blank. I told him that one day, I said, uh, you do know who does your docket. You might not have anything on it that day.
So that would be good.
Yeah.
That would be good.
I'm going to ask him if we can do that.
And we appreciate everybody working with us, and, and Cassie, you're still on board with, uh, with going to the fairgrounds, and the fairgrounds is still on board with that, that move, right?
They have some questions about it, but I think that's just something that we need to discuss with, with them.
Okay.
I, I don't think that they're opposed, Dean was at the, at the meeting also, and I don't think they're opposed to us being down there. There are some questions as far as, um, internet and phone lines and who's going to pay for what and how that's going to be handled, but.
Okay.
But I know they're working on getting the internet connection down there.
Yeah, they, they had already actually gone out and gotten one, um, bid for internet, and they're, they're going to get a couple other, I guess they aren't really bids or quotes, um, they're going to get a second one and see for, they're going to get three totals.
Like ten megabytes a month?
Yeah, and they were going to call, Lacy was going to call back and ask, um, them if there was like an unlimited plan, at least for the time that we're, our offices down there, the, um, encounter wireless.
Oh, yeah, you can get, uh, encounter wireless. I've got that at my house, and the meat, the mid, the mid speed is sixty-eight bucks.
Yeah, that's what, that's what this one was, but it was only for like, it was like sixty-six dollars, but it was only ten. And I'm not sure if Jim, I mean, I don't know if Jim knows the techno lingo, so I don't know if maybe he.
That's the speed, that's not the amount.
Amount.
Yeah.
Because it's unlimited.
Yeah, yeah, it's unlimited, yeah, it's unlimited.
Lacy was going to call and just double check on some of that, because she wanted to make sure that the other two quotes that she gets are on the same level, and then I asked her to make sure that if they aren't unlimited, to see if we can bump up to unlimited while our office is down there, and then bump it back down once the office moves back out. But that's all. And then as far as the extension office is concerned, if I can get through April, we'd like to go ahead and just sort of been down there and be, and, and get out of the way.
Okay, that'd be great. That'd be great. That'd be great.
April.
Yeah, that'd be great. Good, first of May, yeah, that'd be great.
But Tina's on a mission upstairs. She's doing a fantastic job.
And I told her, she was.
Three hundred years out.
She was shredding, she was shredding everything, and I said, no, I said, we will.
For a while, yeah.
I said, no, box it, and we'll come, we burn, all the records that we have are officially burned. There's nothing left, uh, even very few ashes out of everything that we had picked up. It's all, was burned well. We had the snowstorm on, so all of those have been destroyed and burned, so we're, we're clean there, so if you've got something.
We're going to get you started again.
Yeah, there you go, so.
I cannot, I cannot believe some of the things that are still up there.
I have a quick question. Where are we going to do for meetings?
Well, that's, that's another board meeting, yeah, we can.
Well, I mean, that, some thoughts I'm thinking is even like checking with the city office if we could use their room once, or we have the church building down here too. I have the key. I'm in charge of it, so.
We could even have it in the front part of my office if it didn't, you know.
It's just crazy, I don't have to move all this stuff.
Yeah.
I was going to say, yeah, I mean, here's our office, can you not?
Yeah, down there by the, by the, we can get around that bar.
She's, she's on a schedule, and she goes, here's our office.
Yeah, yeah.
By the bar.
Yeah.
The office is by the bar.
Yeah, yeah, right, so, but, you know, like, we're, we're probably, not to say that, I don't know that we'd move this there anyway. We might just set up a, just a, you know, a, one of those folding, long folding table or something for what we're going to do.
What do you want to do with that table in the law library?
Yeah, that's, that's, we talked about that even, using that.
And it's skinny.
Yeah.
It wouldn't take up.
Yeah, we talked about that, that we could use that for our, our board meetings.
Do they have to be held in the county seat?
No.
Because the, the fairgrounds does have a media center now that would actually be able to record and do the, that now too, so.
Oh, there's an option.
That may be an option.
There you go. That's a great.
Do it in a community room. I did look at the schedule for, for the, um, fairgrounds building, and it's pretty, it's pretty open, so we would just need, if you decide to go that direction, especially for courts or anything like that, we just need to go ahead and get stuff on the board. It is being rented quite often.
Okay.
Can I ask on, um, the budget that was the one point one million, is the moving included in on that, or is it not included at all?
Here's the.
Let's see. Let's see, the total, the total is two point five million, but part of that was part of the finishing of this phase.
Right.
So, yeah, that was going to be, well, it's in capital outlay, so we kind of thought, we're not sure.
It hasn't been divided.
It hasn't been divided. It was all in capital outlay, so.
Well, when we talked last time, you shot me the one point one.
I said I didn't remember. I said, do you remember? I, I said that very explicitly. I says, I'm just trying to remember off the top of my head. I don't remember. But we have two point five budgeted, but part of that has to be used for the finishing up what is not paid on phase one, so I don't remember where we were on all of that. So, it's, uh, you know, obviously it may, uh, the move may cost us more and have to come out of our contingency, but we'll just have to see. But we have two point five in that capital outlay budgeted, so. All right, Max.
So we need to, we need to make a decision on, and it sounds to me like we're making headway. I know that there's problems, uh, you know, phone lines, AT&T and all that stuff, and Dia, can you, can you, your, uh, computer server, which is not county-owned, it's state-owned, it can be locked, right?
Yeah, it is locked.
And it is locked?
It is locked.
Okay, so we need to find out whether, you know, if we don't have to move that, and I don't know whether we can.
I think they don't want to move it.
They don't want to.
If they can microwave it, they will not move the server. They already said that.
Okay, excellent.
Yeah, and when Tim was up looking, I also mentioned the fact of possibly moving, like, temporarily, like, your server, the assessor's server, and the clerk's server maybe to the sheriff's department. You know, I don't know. I know hers is a whole different beast than everybody else's, so, so, you know, but is that something that?
I certainly trust the sheriff's department. I trust him. He's going, he's going to a lot of help.
The, but, but her, her deal was a little more secure line deal, so I wasn't sure. Is yours okay to be moved, like, to the sheriff's and for you to?
Well, I need a book for those on.
Me too. Let's read it together, so.
I need somebody to read it.
Yeah.
But, um, I need to call Calpro and make sure that, I don't, he said was the move going to be close proximity, and I couldn't tell him at the time where the move was going to be, but I can ask him.
So you're Calpro, Cindy's Calpro, but the assessor, are they OSU?
State.
They're state, they're state. Okay, so your two could be moved, uh, Simon, you know, one, one person come up and move both of them. I mean, it's not like you need a person and you need a person.
And I didn't call them as well, and so, and I said I'd need to know what it would cost for anyone who has Calpro.
Yeah, yeah, well, we don't have a server though. We're just on some.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Um, the one thing that Brandon from Calpro did tell me was that you can't do the wifi unless it's an encrypted wifi, and that means something to you.
Yeah.
Okay, but you know what I'm saying, just for the security issues.
So, do you, so is your, all of your computers hardwired? You don't wifi?
Everybody's is hardwired.
Everybody's.
All the Calpros and even the over there, everyone's is hardwired.
The assessor's.
Everyone in the building is hardwired.
So I guess, in, in short, if they need to be, stay hardwired, if you're going to, doesn't matter if we're moving them two hundred yards or if we're moving them two blocks, I guess in that case we might as well, for the security, we might, might as well move them to move. I mean, I don't know, might be better. It might, and I don't know anything about theirs.
Theirs has to be moved. The state already told them. Well, that's what they told me. They said the state got them, and they have two of them.
They have two of them, okay.
Yeah, two servers.
They have to go because everything is stored on their file servers.
Yeah, I think.
So, but you'll find the rooms, the, the four rooms are bigger than any rooms we have individually in here.
You're saying?
Yeah, could be. Break them up. We'll have great parking, great parking over there, so, so, um, anyway. So we appreciate everybody, you know, working on that, and, you know, uh, the one thing we might have to do is, if we get Steven a separate room, you know, obviously it's a big room for two people, but it might crowd the rest of us up, you know. I, I, Desi could maybe squeeze in with you and, and, you know, I don't know, maybe the election board could squeeze in with you guys, you know.
Well, if it's bigger than what they have now, how would you not?
Yeah, I, I think it'll be fine, but, but, yeah.
We'll build walls until it's smaller than what you have now.
Yeah, the file cabinets can kind of use to segregate them, but, but again, in the election board, but again, we go back to your, your, your phone calls, so we've got to rethink all that, whether that works, so. Anyhow, we'll just have to think about everything, so just be thinking about who you could buddy, buddy up with or, you know, if, what, what might work and what might not, what, what your issues are of sharing a room, or if you had to share a room, who could you share with? Just think about that and we'll go from there. But I think today you need a date.
So the date is going to be November the seventh, is that right?
Yep.
I'm just going to clarify that.
He wants to wait till he's, no, you'll be in maybe before that, so, yeah, all righty, so what we have is, I would, um, I would make a motion that we have the final, final move out date as June seventh with demolition.
I said December seventh, didn't I?
Yeah.
November, I am sorry.
We thought you were teasing us.
Yeah, we thought you were being funny.
We thought you were doing a ha-ha.
Well, yes and no.
The way things are going, it may be that way.
It may be.
June the seventh, is that what you meant, Max?
That's what I meant.
Okay.
June sixth is Pearl Harbor Day. We could, our, yeah, not Pearl Harbor Day, June sixth is D-Day. D-Day, D-Day. We should have, we should have the sixes our D-Day.
There.
We should have had our sixes, yeah, there you go. So I'd make the motion that June sixth, everybody is moved out of the courthouse and demolition could be, uh, commence on June tenth, and we move it.
June sixth or June seventh?
Nah, I suggest everybody.
I did.
Seventh.
Seventh is a Friday.
Seventh, Friday, yes, everybody out by Friday, and the new day starts on the, the tenth here.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and been seconded. All in favor?
Hess.
Aye.
Bobbit.
Aye.
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 June the seventh.
Okay, so can I ask, I mean, do they have the bids? I mean, are they, they have the bids, so they're going to start?
They've got, they needed the dates to put in it. The, the, we're going to call them after the meeting to put the dates in. In fact, that's.
That's next.
That's next. It's on there, so, but we had to have the dates in, so.
And can we, um, see when the bid, when you decide on which bid, see what's going to be done?
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, uh, the, it'll be, the bids will be on our.
We'll have a.
Well, we have a. Will, will we have a hard copy, hard copy, or will it just be online?
No, usually it's just on.
Yeah, you can go online and it'll be on our website under bid. If you go up there and they have like bids agenda, click on bids, and I probably won't be on there today, you know.
Oh, no, it'll be a while, cause they have to do the bid and then they do the pre-bid, because then all the contractors come in.
But she can look at the bid.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's what she's, yeah. No, you can look at the bid and walk through it and see what, what it, what it is, yes.
It's not up to you guys. You don't have to tell all of it.
Yeah, because I don't remember what all it was.
Or how much it cost.
Well, we don't have any, we have no idea on cost yet, cause we have no bids back, so. And we're hoping we, you know, it's like the court, the fairgrounds, I don't know how many times we went out on bids on some of that, we couldn't get bids on. So, so, you know, it's one of those deals that, you know, might take us a while to get bids on everything, cause we're kind of remote.
Our bid on our buildings, we're gonna know for sure on that today.
It should've been on the fourteenth.
It should've been, yeah, I know. But we gotta call and make for sure.
Yeah.
Well, they called and told me we had the bid, but like, I don't have the minutes yet because they haven't had another meeting to sign.
Could be.
Could be.
And do we have like a nine thirty-six that we have to move that mobile home with those? And like, um?
A time?
No, like DPS has to have a nine thirty, is DPS is gonna move them?
We, we're taking, we got, we're doing house, no, 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 DPS is not moving them.
Yeah.
Um, we're gonna get ha, a house move. We've got three. We've contacted someone from Fairview, someone from Skytook?
Skytook and Stillwater.
So, they'll take care of all the.
Permits, yeah. They do all of that. We just, it's a turnkey job to come up here and to set, and to set it up.
Okay.
It's part of their deal is not only move it, but to set it up.
When do you think the, we'll know where we can move them to?
Well, I'm gonna try to get ahold of, uh, Mr. Sidwell this afternoon and see if Deena, if his, is, Dia is back. To, that's who he needed to talk to.
Yeah, she took a cruise.
Oh, she took a cruise. Okay, so, maybe she's not back. Okay. Okay, so.
Do we have a secondary location in mind?
Well, we've got a lot of options. The FSA office where they were, they said we could move up there. Um, we can still go down to my lot there, here and here, we could go here somewhere, you know. Long story out, we could even go to Pond Creek to the fairgrounds, you know, possible. So, we're, so we got, we've got other options.
Okay.
So.
Does the FSA already have sewer and stuff?
Yes, because they had those portable buildings there. In fact, they already, they had to put in a bigger transformer and it's all, it's all there. It's already all there. So, the only thing is, is that, that their parking would be grass.
Right.
Whereas this is all gravel, so.
Okay, so that brings us down to item S, notice a bidder for oh-three twenty nineteen, phase two of the courthouse renovations.
They just wanted me, you know, cause when they first originally talked, so they, I just put it on there just because.
Okay, so we, so we don't need any action today?
Okay. Okay, item eight, new business. Do they have any new business? No, no new business.
I'm not saying that new business, but can we make a comment of some kind? Not absolutely.
Did I have any business?
I'll make a comment afterwards. For somebody.
She just needs to vent. She just needs to vent to someone.
Well, no, it's not right.
It's, it's on the courthouse, is it on the courthouse? Okay, well, well, it's up there on R, so we haven't passed it yet.
I asked, I just wondered, I don't know if it's even possible, but you know, Tim's gonna be doing a lot of work, and he's already made a lot of them. I mean, can, you get paid extra for that, a bonus or a stipend or something?
Well, is he clocked in on the, I mean, the, it's in the sheriff's budget. I mean, is he, is he, I'm sure he's tracking his time on there. I, I don't know. I mean, I'm, I'm assuming that, but.
That he was to work after hours? Would it be on the general budget, since it's concerning the move?
I, that's, I, no, he's a, he's a, he's an employee of the sheriff. He's employed by the sheriff. We cannot employ, he can't have two jobs with the county. He, so he's under the jurisdiction of the sheriff. And if he does the IT stuff, that's his jurisdiction.
Does he consider the IT guy?
For the sheriff's department, yes, he is.
When I had some innovation done, and Scott Balker came up here on Saturday, he was paid separately.
By your office?
Yeah, but that was, never ran through the board. That, that was never ran through the board, so.
I think it was.
No, after the fact it was, when we got payroll. That's after the fact that, no.
Okay, I'm just, Judge.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Yeah. Uh, Cindy, do you have any new business? No, you said no and.
I have no.
Dean and you.
No.
I don't think I have any.
Okay, I don't have any either. Can Mr.'s comment, Dean?
Well, with a little bit of rain and snow and stuff that we had, it messed up the roads again. We're back to working on the roads and maintaining them. We've got one little bridge we've been working on, and, uh, uh, we're still continuing that.
Thank you.
Due to weapons, we can't, uh, get it completed, but, uh, um, other than that, we, that's it all I have.
Okay. Cindy?
Job security. Let's start over.
Yeah, job security, yeah.
Yeah, that's what we're doing again. Um, same thing, we're, we're just been sitting in the shop getting a lot of other little things done, and we're back to, uh, hauling rock today, and we've got graders out running today. So, the, as much as I hated the high wind, it did dry the roads out, so. Um, if you all had not heard, April first, uh, Mike Patterson, uh, Secretary of Transportation and ODOT Director is retiring. And so, Tim, uh, Gatz, who is the Turnpike Director, he will assume all three positions. He will be the ODOT Director and Secretary of Transportation, all three, just like Wiggly was six years ago. So, that will be the guy that will do it all. Um, in the federal omnibus package that got signed, uh, was a good thing. The federal money was released, so the ODOT is back to now letting out projects. Max, that helps yours.
That does.
Keeps it on track since the, with the federal shutdown, the ODOT money stopped, and so projects could not be let. And if you remember right, it put Oklahoma, ODOT into big trouble, cause they couldn't let their projects.
Yes.
That, that is good news. And in that, uh, omnibus package is a one-time four hundred and thirty-five million dollar rural bridge aid repair. I have not got into the weeds on what that means, but overall, the funding that's coming there is less than it was last year. So, I don't know what that means in the big scheme of things, but some of it is, is gonna be ear tagged for rural bridges. Repair is what, it's not new bridges, it's repair. So, I don't know, I've, I've got to do some more. NACO is actually researching that to see what that means. I don't know what that means. Um, we've got that going on. Um, legislation's still moving forward. Uh, uh, they met Friday. Uh, Heath, the Kingfisher County Commissioners, met with legislators, and I think that House Bill twenty-one fifty, we're try, gonna try to just stop it, instead of trying to add new language, because it's not only not good for counties, it's not good for cities. It pretty much is, almost allows the Corporation Commission to have intimate domain, and that is not, not good when you talk about right of ways. So, we've got that going on. Um, this week, I've got, uh, we've got our ACO, all of our ACO board meetings. Our legislative meeting will be, start at nine, followed by our, uh, CED meetings and our SIGZIF meetings and our ACO board meetings. So, Wednesday will be a busy day. And Friday morning, I leave for my NACO conference, and I will not be back till Wednesday, the following Wednesday night. I know we have payroll on Thursday morning on, what day is that? I mean, uh, seventh, March seventh. Yeah, I will not be here for the March fourth meeting. If my planes aren't delayed and the weather's not bad, I should be, be here for the seventh, March seventh, but I've got a late flight, so.
Okay, so you're not gonna be here March fourth?
I will not be here March fourth, right. So, I will be speaking on the Hill again on, for rural transportation in the Longworth Building on Tuesday, uh, before committees.
Okay.
And that's about all I have for today.
Okay. Uh, you covered the meetings that we were having Wednesday, OCC EDV meeting, uh, Wednesday at Oklahoma City Legislative at nine. I don't know, I haven't decided whether I'm gonna go down and invite my, uh, people or not.
The weather doesn't look so good.
It don't look so good. That's what I'm saying.
No, it's supposed to be sleeting Tuesday night and all day Wednesday.
I, I'm, I'm a little apprehensive about even going. I thought maybe they might.
Cancel?
Cancel.
I wondered about that. I even thought about going down Tuesday night and getting a room.
That is what I'm thinking about right now.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking about that too, too, Max.
And then just to have the, the trip home to struggle with.
Right.
You know.
But at least you know you're there, you're not traveling at night in the dark.
Yes.
You know, to get there at seven, to get there at seven o'clock, you know, you gotta leave at four thirty-five, so, and then not knowing what the roads are.
And not being traveled or, you know.
Yeah. So, I'm, I'm, I'm with you, Max.
Okay. A bit of good news, I got my, uh, my, uh, warranty deed for my property over to Man, uh, over to Wakita.
Oh.
Deed it over to Grant County. I took it over to Cindy's office earlier today, um, for that parcel of ground in the corner. So, and I got a phone call from a gentleman right there that said that the stuff on that lot was his. So, I'm not gonna name any names, but we got that worked out, and, uh, he's supposed to be getting what's, he, is his off of the lot. I said, okay, that'd be great. Thank you. Um, we got, uh, we're going after the last three loads of rock today for the cemetery out here east of town. Uh, they had approached me about hauling some, uh, rock for them to put on the drive going in there. And, uh, we're gonna, we hauled three loads last week. We've got three more to haul today for that. Uh, we've about got the rock picked up on the oil locations that they had give us. Gonna have, uh, in a month, uh, not this month, but the last part of March, we're supposed to have, uh, a company gonna close off a road up by Renfro on that White Cliffs Pipeline. They have a abnormal, uh, abnormal, abnormal reading where it crosses the road, and they're gonna dig that up and inspect it, see what they need to do. The road might be closed from one to four days, depending what they find when they dig it up. But they're, uh, also up in DeKansas, up in Harper County, and they're doing the same thing up there. The gal called me this weekend and, and let me know that they were planning on doing that in last of March. And that's about all I have. Brings us down to item ten, adjournment.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Ah, well, second that motion. That's a great motion.
Yeah, that's what I come for. Let's pick your own.
At eleven twenty-four. Oh, roll call. Aye.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye, aye.
Hobbit. Fight.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay. Sounds good.